Okay, hi, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So the first thing I want to do is I want to read that there's this meeting notice from the governor that we need to read. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's March 15th, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the Town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We strive to provide access to such meetings via link to call in or other similar options. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as following, sorry, as soon as possible following the same. And Mary did let me know those are on YouTube. You can search for Town of Oxford zoning or ZBA. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. And tonight, we're gonna have a public hearing for 68 McIntyre Road, an application for a variance of the side yard setback. And I would like to, we need to take a roll call of the members. So I need each member to state their name, that they're present, and then I will turn it over to Stephen to read the legal notices. So maybe we just go ahead if you want to start with Dan.
Dan Champagne, associate member, I believe the title is.
Okay, Al? You have to state your name, Al.
Al Saint Tremaine.
Okay, Stephen?
Stephen Paul Balconis.
Tom?
Thomas Purcell.
Okay, Dave?
David Silverman.
All right, and I'm Pete LaFlash. All right, Stephen, would you please read the legal notices?
Sure. The Town of Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing Notice. Please take notice that the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals will be held on a remote public hearing using the Zoom meeting application on Thursday, October 29, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. to consider the variance application of Brian O'Neil and Laura O'Neil for property owned by the applicant located at 68 McIntyre Road, North Oxford, Mass. Assessors map 20, household A06 in the R1 residential zoning district. The applicant requests a variance of the minimum side yard setback requirements as set forth in Chapter 10, Table 4 of the Oxford zoning bylaws for an existing barn. The plans and applications may be viewed upon request to the town clerk or the land management department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should join the Zoom meeting on the date and time designated or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the board at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. or 1540. See masspublications.org for legal notice. Board of Appeals, Town of Oxford, Oxford, Massachusetts. To the applicants of the Zoning Board of Appeals, you are hereby advised of the following provisions of the Oxford zoning bylaws. Appeals, appeals to the Zoning Board of Appeals must be filed within 20 days from the date or order of decision which is being appealed specifying the grounds thereof. Variances, in order to grant a variance from the requirements of this bylaw, the Zoning Board of Appeals must find that all of the following conditions have been met. A, there are unique circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures. That B, especially affect such land or structures, but do not generally affect the zoning district in which it is located. And that C, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would be involved substantial hardship, financial, or otherwise, but not of personal nature, to the petitioner or appellant. And that D, deservably may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the purpose of this bylaw. In accordance with the Chapter 48, Section 15 in the Mass General Laws, you are hereby advised that any person aggrieved by the decision of the board, excuse me, related to this matter must file an appeal as provided for Section 17 of said Chapter 48 within 20 days after the date of the filing of this decision in the office of the town clerk.
Thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
So just to let everybody know how we're gonna plan to do this. I'm gonna go through this packet which the applicant provided to the town based on requirements we had, that I'm going to ask the applicant to kind of reiterate what their case is. Then the board members will ask questions, and then, or at least a first round of questions, and then we'll open it up if there's anybody else that would like to be heard. And then we would, we'll go in and see if there's any further questions, and then we'll, we'll take it from there. So let me go through the packet here first so that everybody is aware of the paperwork that we had to review for this. This is the legal notice that Stephen read. This is the front page of the application by Brian and Laura O'Neil. And they're looking for two feet of side yard relief. And there's a further letter that explains in more detail of what they're, they're looking to do. This is the other legal notice that Stephen read. This is a copy of the deed from 2015, when the applicant's purchased the property. This is a, a plan of the property. The property that we're looking at, I believe, if I remember correctly, it's this triangled one here. Okay. This is a list of abutters that was provided, and because this property is close to the Charlton Town Line, there's, there's a list of the Oxford abutters, as well as a certified list from the Town of Charlton of the abutters. This is a letter from attorneys Fletcher and Tilton, which explains what the applicant is requesting to do. They are requesting two-foot variance. This is an R1 district, and, and the zoning requirement is 20 feet from the side yard line. The applicant apparently has a barn that was on the property when they purchased it that is, appears to be over the property line. It looks like they have some type of pending agreement or agreement with the abutting neighbors to swap 1,398 square feet of land between the two to then put the land that the applicant's barn is on, onto what would then be their own property. And unfortunately, in order to keep the shed that the neighbor has, which is close to the property line, the new proposed property line would put it at 20 feet, sorry, would put the shed at 20 feet, but the barn would be at 18 feet from, from the property line. That's why they're seeking two feet of relief. If, if we can talk later if anybody thinks there's other detail in that letter they want to bring up. This is kind of a blown up map that shows in more detail. I could probably, I could probably rotate this, but... So this is the current property line, and you can see that the barn slightly encroaches past the property line. The proposal is to, I believe, is that they would be acquiring this triangular piece of land from the neighbor and swapping for this other triangular piece. And now their barn would be on their property, but this line could not be drawn any closer to the neighbor's shed because then it would be, it would be, it would be within the 20-foot side yard setback over here. So it looks like we have 18 feet from the barn to the proposed new property line. Okay, and let me get back there, sorry. Okay, this is a letter from the zoning enforcement officer just stating that their proposal to change the property lines puts it at 18 feet, so it's inside of the 20, and that in order to proceed, they would need a variance from Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a further letter from attorneys Fletcher and Tilton describing a little bit more of what they were trying to do. And this is another blow up of the plan. It's similar to what we just did. Mary had taken the snapshot of the, of the large sheet we had received. One paper that I did not see in the, I received in my packet, but I didn't see here in this is that we require the tax collector to certify that taxes are current, and I do have the letter in hand that they are in fact paid and up to date. So, any questions on that so far? All right, so I'd like to open it up to the applicant. I think I saw Laura O'Neil online. I'd like to welcome you and ask if you would, I guess you need to just state your name, but then if you could take us through and just give us any detail, or maybe help explain what it is you're trying to do.
Hi, I'm Laura O'Neil. I do have Elena here who's from Fletcher-Tilton, as well as I think Todd's on here as well, Todd Broder. I don't know, Elena, should I talk to, about what's going on, or question here on this?
I'm Elena Despotopoulos with Fletcher-Tilton. Laura, I'm happy to, to kind of...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So again, Elena Despotopoulos at Fletcher-Tilton. We represent Brian and Laura, the owners and applicants, in their side yard setback variance. Essentially, when they purchased the property in 2015, the property included a barn, and the neighboring property had a shed. Both were constructed prior to the O'Neills' ownership. The shed and the barn are approximately 38.21 feet away from each other. And because of the location, there is not the ability to, to obtain the 20-foot setback requirement on both lots. And so, at the time they purchased the property, the O'Neills did not know that there was a variance, excuse me, a setback issue. They're trying to sell the property, and now that they've become aware of the setback issue, we're seeking the variance. And so, as shown on the plan, we would do a land swap with the neighboring property at 70 McIntyre Road for equal parcels, and then the new proposed lot line would provide 18 feet of setback between the property line and the barn on 68 McIntyre, and provide a little bit over 20 feet from the property line and the shed on 70 McIntyre.
Okay. Has the land swap happened yet, or is it contingent upon this approval?
It is contingent upon approval and approval of the subdivision plan. I believe the signed land swap agreement was circulated today. I did send that. Both parties have signed the agreement.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna open it up to the board members and see if they have any questions they'd like to ask, in no particular...
Yes, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Did you want to go first, David?
I believe that's why. So Attorney Despotopoulos, when your clients purchased the property, was the barn in its current shape there at the time?
Yes, yeah.
And it just didn't, the zoning violation didn't show up on the plot plan?
No, no, it was never brought to their attention when they purchased this.
And nothing was done to the shape of the barn between when they purchased it and
I don't believe so, Laura, if you want to confirm.
No, we, we haven't done anything to the barn as far as the, anything to it since we purchased the house.
Okay. That's all for now, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Al?
Yes. Couple things. One thing, what is, what is the hardship to the owner of the barn?
Um, in order to convey the property, they need to have the setback resolved. And so, this is the, the best that we were able to do with the 18 feet. We want to market the property with the barn and the ability to have stables. It's a rural residential district, so that would promote the aesthetic and scenic value of the district. And so, we'd like to maintain the barn if we can.
Are the people that are buying it concerned with how much room they have? Is this the back of the barn that you're talking, 18 feet?
Al, if, if I could, you, you can't, you can't see the screen now, or?
Oh, I've got the plan in my hand.
Oh, okay.
But it didn't show where the front of the barn was.
Oh, that, okay, so the question is, how was the barn oriented? Like, where is the, where is the, where is the front entrance to the barn? Is it on the rightmost side here on the plan that, that we're looking at?
It's on the front end. It's, so it's the, the side that faces, yeah, that end right there.
Okay, so it's on the side.
There are things also on the back end of it, so the main entrance is on the front, but there is an exit on the backside. It does have two horse stalls in it, so the horse stalls are on the left and the right-hand side. So in that back left corner, there is a door that exits, that's for, over to the, like on the actual backside of, on that, right around there, there is another door.
So it sounds like there's a back, on the back left corner, Al, if you're looking at it with the street.
Okay, coming in from the, from the, well, from the street, is there, is there a reason? The 18-foot side, is there anything on that side that's in use that needs entryway for the barn?
No, not, not on that left wall, not on that left side. There's no, there's a window, that's about it.
Did you have? What I was interested in is the date of when this barn was built. I would really like to see a copy of the original building permit and the plan that we presented to get that building permit.
So that's the part of the problem that we run into is the prior owner never pulled any permits to put the barn up. So that's kind of why we're running into this issue now. And like I said, we didn't know about this issue until after we purchased the house.
So there was never any permits for the barn to be built?
No, as far as we know, there's, there was no permits for her barn or the shed that the neighbor put up over, you know, the 38 feet away.
No. You've gotten tax bills, and I assume the barn is being taxed. Was it being taxed from the time it was built? Because this is part of the building permit process, so it gets on the tax laws.
I did pull up a copy of the property record card, Al, today, and it is, it is on there now. I, I don't know, you know, it's listed as a barn with a one-story loft, so I don't know when it came on, but it is on there.
So my feeling, if I don't know whether taxes have been paid, as a citizen of town, have we been subsidizing the tax portion that should have been paid by this property for the barn? If anyone can answer that, I don't know.
Yeah, are you actually expecting an answer on that, Al, or?
Yeah. Well, I would like to someone to get to the assessors to see when the, a history of the tax payments.
We don't have any record of that here, do we, Mary?
We do not. I no longer have access. Oh, wait a minute, I have an old one in here. Summary record card. See if I can figure out when the barn was on here.
Do you want to ask, do you want to ask any other questions, Al, while she looks that up, or?
Barn was started, the barn looked, looked like it was noted in 2000.
Okay, Al, hold on a second, we're having, we're having an issue with your, did you hear Mary, she said that 2000 is when it was, yep.
Okay, so it's probably been there long enough that it has some standing, and I don't know that, I don't do legal work, so. But the, no one's being forced to tear the barn down at the moment? The town?
The town has not, the town has not taken any action to have the barn torn down.
And the neighbor hasn't taken any action?
Doesn't appear so.
No, I don't believe so.
So as the barn stands today, it's owned by the people who own it. And there's no, nobody demanding that it be taken down? I'm trying to figure out where the hardship is now.
Well, if I may, Al, it, it's an illegal barn, in the sense that it can't be where it is. So that...
After any number of years, does it get any status to it?
Well, you're looking, I don't know if you're thinking about an adverse possession matter, but that's 21 years. And Attorney Despotopoulos, I don't want to speak for you, but I, I see the, the hardship being, being the, being the fact that they are unable to sell their property because no lender will loan on it, and they can be forced to either pick the barn up and move it 20, 20-plus feet away, whether, given the way the lot lines are now, or two-plus feet away with the land swap, or tear part or all of the barn, I'm sorry, tear part or all of the barn down. So there certainly is some hardship involved. Attorney Despotopoulos, want to speak to that?
Correct, yeah. We won't be able to convey the property without resolving this.
Yeah, but isn't this a self-induced hardship?
If they put the, if they put the barn up themselves, I would say that would be a self-induced hardship. If when they purchased the...
I don't know if we lost you, David, but I think what he was saying, not to ask for him, but is they, they purchased this in 2015. It was put up prior to 2000, or it was first brought to the town's attention around at least 2000. Okay, David, I don't know if you're back, we seem to lose you for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, for some reason, my internet connection tonight is coming up is unstable. So the, the hardship is, uh, there's a zoning, zoning violation, and they're not going to be able to sell it than where it's located right now. So I mean, that's, that's a hardship, Al, if you were asking what the hardship is.
I have a hard time getting away from whether it was self-induced or not, but, and why I was asking about the timing involved, obviously, the zoning has changed over the years. So if that barn was built a certain number of years ago, before the law came, the law was changed in about 1990, from 10 feet to 20 feet, effectively, I think when the new zoning was adopted, and the old zoning was just thrown out, the way they handled it. But I'd just like to make sure, I don't really have anything problem with what they're trying to accomplish. I just want to know if someone else comes and... As a different problem, but similar, similar type.
You're looking at a, at a presidential-type issue, Al?
Yeah. I want to know our precedent is what we, what we've, we've established.
Well, if they, if they constructed the barn where it currently is, then, you know, they, they might be in for a bit of shame on you, but it appears that they did not do that, that they purchased it like that, and it sounds like counsel for their lender may have dropped the ball on a plot plan.
If they got a mortgage, they probably got a plot plan. I haven't...
If, if there was one, it would have rang all kinds of bells and whistles.
So, am I to, well, I shouldn't assume that there was no plot plan. The owner could tell us that, though. But I mean, that was neglectful. Most people buying a property would have a plot plan.
But that's, that, and I don't want to speak for, for the applicant's counsel, but to me, that, that's where the hardship lays.
All right, any other questions, Al?
No, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thanks.
No, I, my only comment would be, usually at the passing, I don't know that they actually go out and do a plot plan more than a, a tape survey, and Al could, could tell me the difference between a plot plan and a tape survey. From what I understand, a tape survey is used as a guideline where the plot plan itself is more of an accuracy issue. A tape survey, a lot of times, is just based on lines of occupation. Am I correct in assuming that, Al?
I thought this line was fairly well-defined, though, one of the plans. Depending on how, comparatively, was a newer subdivision?
Well, this, I don't think this is a subdivision.
Within the last 50 years or so, within the time you had to put the plans in practice?
Yeah, this is an A and R, it was on an existing road, there's no subdivision.
Usually, that's pretty well-marked, but I don't, I don't know if it's marked, it doesn't show it on their plan, but I, and I don't have the access that I can get into the registry anymore.
I don't either. I can, I can understand the applicant's concern about reconciling the legal issues that goes along with this so that the, the sale of, the future sale of the property can, can be done, so. Again, I don't have much of an issue with what the applicant is trying to, what they're trying to achieve.
No, I think they've tried to achieve what they're trying to achieve very well-done, but I just want to defend myself when I take a vote on something, and I can defend myself against the next person that comes, and it's not so well-done.
Okay. Any other questions, Tom?
No, I'm all set, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Dan?
Thank you for letting me jump in here. So, I really appreciate Al's perspective and his questions, because that was one of my main questions was, is this building permitted? So we're looking at a building that, you know, was built without a structure that was built without a permit, and so it's not a legal structure, from what I understand, but I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. And, you know, we're asking to give the consolidation of the two feet. I think Al asking his questions and people asking really helped me understand that a little better. But just to be clear, you know, we do go to vote. I don't know, I don't believe I'll be voting tonight because I'm the sixth member, but we're essentially voting on a structure that didn't have a building permit. So it's just a cause of concern for me, and I feel bad that people are in this position. Being on this committee is definitely an learning experience for me. So this is, as Al brought up, you know, setting a precedent moving forward, at least for me.
Okay.
So it was just a statement, not a specific question.
Okay. All set, then?
I'm all set.
All right, thanks. Stephen?
Yes, thank you. There's a few, I'd say, issues, but one thing, people that own the property should not be penalized for something they're not aware of, and by any mistakes that were done by other people in the past. And you consider the hardship, to me, there's a few of them. One is a sellable point for that property, that somebody would come down and buy the property. They look at the barn. They might have a horse. They might have one horse, two horses, or whatever. That could be a sellable point. Now, you take the barn down, now they're losing revenue right there. The other thing is, if you're forced to move that barn, there's another loss of revenue, but it shouldn't be imposed upon the people that own this property, because they didn't do anything illegal. And now you've got the neighbor next door, they're willing to do a land swap to make everything kosher and make it the way it should be, and all we're looking at is two feet. And they're going to legally do the survey on the property, land swap, whatever they need to make it right. And, you know, I applaud them for doing that. So I don't think these people should be penalized for any reason, even though that structure was put up there without a building permit. And that's why you've got us guys here, you know, so you look at something like that, and it's like a no-brainer. Not to interfere with anybody else, no other property, no other neighbors. It's not going to make a difference to anybody else in that whole neighborhood. So, you know, like I said, these people shouldn't be penalized. And I, you know, I think that we should move forward and, you know, vote on this. And like Al said, down the road, we might get something else, and I'm sure there's more property in this town, or any other town, that are structures or whatever, that are illegally done or built at the time that nobody really paid attention, and wasn't as strict back then as it is today. So every issue is going to be different, no matter which way that comes in front of us. So we can't treat all the issues like the one we're doing right now, because the next one will probably be totally different. But that's about it.
All right, thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
I'd like to ask a few questions, or I think I understand what they're trying to do, and I do echo some of Stephen's comments, that these folks purchased the property in 2015. Yes, somebody put up this barn without a permit, either in the year 2000 or prior to the year 2000. The town has been taxing it as an outbuilding since 2000, so it may have been put up without the fee for a permit, but the town has certainly known that it's there for 20 years now. So I don't think that these folks, especially since they only owned the property since 2015, should be penalized for that. I see this as a good faith estimate, actually, now that they're trying to sell it to make everything legal. It would improve the situation for the next owners of both of these properties. They probably had to provide some consideration to their neighbor for this land swap, and obviously, they've had to pay for surveys and such. So I think they've kind of done, to me, it seems like they've done the right thing here to try and make this legal now, going forward. And as Stephen said, this board is the opportunity to appeal that process and to move it forward, where the zoning enforcement officer goes by the actual letter of the law zoning and has to deny, you know, the approval of this change, because it doesn't fit the 20-foot side yard setback. If I understand all the facts here correctly, they'd be looking for two-foot relief on a side yard setback, so two feet of variance. Let me just see. And this would put the, they're currently about 38 feet apart. And, yeah, so I think that's all that I had for notes. And one other thing I would add is, I don't see this as self-induced. Again, if these people had owned the property in 2000 or prior to 2000, then I think that would be clear that if they had put it up. But even as Stephen said, everybody's going to come to us with a unique situation, and even if these people had put this up themselves 20 years ago and had owned the property, they might still have a hardship today. And again, they're making, I might argue that these folks are making a good faith estimate to try and rectify and clear everything up, so, all right, so that's it. I'd like to ask the board if they have any other questions now, or I can open it up to the public if there are any other comments, and then the board could come back, and if they have any other questions. So if there's no objection, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody else on the meeting that would like to be heard? Okay, I don't hear anybody stepping forward, so I'll go back to the board. Are there any other questions the board would like to ask?
No, Mr. Chairman, but if you will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, I would like to so move.
Okay, let me just explain that first to everybody involved, that if we, I'm getting an echo from someone, but if we do close the public hearing, then there would be no more, there would be no further debate on the topic. So if anybody has any other comments or questions, I would ask they come forward now before we do close all debate.
I have one more question.
Sure, Al.
From the people, or from the owner?
Okay.
Is this the 18 feet, or the 20 feet, or whatever is proposed, going to be used for anything other than space to the barn? Side setbacks to the barn?
No, there's, it's currently just yard, and that's how it's going to stay.
Thank you.
I'll add that I did look on Google Maps, and from the street, you can't even, it's very difficult to see the barn, because it looks like there's a line of trees that are down there. Okay, all right. So David, we would entertain that motion to close the public hearing, and I would look for a second on that motion.
I second it.
Okay, so voting members? Okay, David?
I.
Al? To close the public hearing? Okay, Tom?
I.
Stephen?
I.
And I also vote yes. So the public hearing is closed. At this point, we'd be left to make a motion to approve or deny. And just to be clear, are there any, I didn't hear about any contingencies that someone might want to make as part of their motion, but the request is for two-foot relief on the side yard setback.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the two feet requested for relief from side yard setback be allowed.
Okay.
I second.
Yes, we have a second, and-
Should we refer that motion to the plan?
So an amendment to the motion would be to grant that relief as referenced in the plan that was presented as part of the packet?
Yeah. If it is in the plan but not in the request, that's fine. If it's in both, it's still fine, so yes.
Okay. Do you also want to second that? Was that Tom that seconded that?
Yes, I'll second that amended motion.
Okay, so I will call for the vote. David?
I.
Al?
I.
Tom?
I.
Stephen?
I.
And I also vote yes. So this request is granted to the applicants. There's a 20-day appeal period that anybody in the public could appeal this decision if they feel they're grieved by it. So I don't believe you can move forward until that 20-day period is up, and then I believe the, what is it, Mary, the order gets typed up through the town clerk, or?
Right, so I will prepare the decision of the board for this evening, and once that is filed with the town clerk's office, that is when the 20-day appeal period starts. So I probably won't get to that immediately. It'll be about a week or so before I file that.
Okay.
And then the 20-day appeal period starts.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Sure.
All right, so I guess we're all set, unless you have any questions to the applicants? You've all sat? Okay, all right, thank you. You're welcome to stay on. We have some other business that we are going to talk about. The, I think the other thing that I had was some minutes that we had from February 13th and July 30th. So it's been quite a while. I did read through the minutes. I don't know if other folks are prepared to vote on those minutes tonight. Is anybody that's not prepared to vote on those? Okay, I take that as a, that we're okay to vote, so Tom, you were absent, but all the other members. So on this one, Dan, you could vote. You were one of the five members that were present. So I'd need a motion to approve the minutes of September, I'm sorry, of February 13th, 2020. Does everybody have those? Anybody have any questions about that?
Is that the Crowley one?
This was land off of, yes, yes. Yes, it was, yes.
Yeah, with the railroad.
Yes, the railroad bed, yes. Okay, so we'd need someone to make a motion to accept or to amend.
Make a motion to accept February 13th, 2020 minutes.
Okay, a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Stephen?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Okay, and yes for myself, so that is approved. We have the July 30th, 2020 minutes. These were from, which one was this? This was the four, was this the four lots?
No.
Butler Royal.
Oh, Butler Royal, that's right, Butler Royal, okay. Oh, there was two of them, and Fort Hill Road variance, I think, for, was it for a garage, or for a, yeah.
It was a garage.
Yeah. So, yeah, Tom, I can't, you can't vote, but-
Right.
Okay, so we would need a motion to accept or change these.
Can I make the motion to accept the minutes of July 30th?
Yes. Do we have a second?
Sure, a second. No, please, Steve.
I'll second it.
So Stephen gets credit for the second.
Nice job, Steve.
Okay, so how do you vote, Stephen?
Uh, yes.
Al? Did we lose you, Al?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, we're going to abstention.
I wasn't there for most of the meetings.
Okay, this was the one, oh, yes, I remember you had the-
I kept saying in and out.
Okay, fair enough.
I didn't have much of it, so.
I would vote I.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
And myself is a yes also. I think that's all that we had for official business on the agenda, Mary?
That is, yes.
Okay. Is there any other business that any members would like to bring forward?
Vote, vote, vote.
Three times, if you can?
As they said a long time ago in Chicago, vote early, vote often.
Yeah.
But just vote.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Al.
How are we handling, or going to handle, or attempting to handle site inspections?
Well, I guess if we did-
For a zoning board matter?
Sometimes we would go out as a board.
Yeah, well, we could still do that.
Invited, I don't know how legal it was, but the precedent before, up to real recently, has always been, we would go on site visits. Lately, we started, we'd only go on site visits if we couldn't get there, because there were some objections to whether neighbors could, it was considered part of the meeting, or whether the neighbors should be there, or allowed there, or butters, whoever.
Well, I don't know that I'm the final say on this, but I would think that if we wanted to do a site visit, I think we could. I think maybe your question is, is it legal? Is there any legal reason we can't do it? And then is there any legal reason we have to say that the public can't be invited, and we're still able to, you know, bypass the open meeting law, or whatever, based on the governor's orders? I think we could probably accommodate all that. We could have the site visit. Everybody just has to probably wear a mask and stay, you know, stay apart from each other. I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Or not going down as a group, just when you have time prior to the meeting, going down. And if you don't, then during the meeting, requesting permission of the applicant for us to go down, and then the vote on whatever it is would be at the following meeting. So it's really kind of a, it depends on the situation.
But somehow, one time I said we couldn't-
Yeah, I don't know if anybody else is, can, is Al breaking up, or is it just me?
Yeah, no, he is.
I know that when we were on Zoom, and sometimes if you kill your video, if you're able to do that.
Was it the last 10 years?
Al, we missed, unfortunately, we missed what you said, because your video and audio had frozen. But if you have the opportunity to turn off your video, if you want, then I bet you your audio comes through more clearly.
What I was wondering, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I was just wondering if that was something, because the new law and the governor getting involved, should we find out if we can have a site visit?
I guess that's a valid point. Is there a certain quantity of people that, because this whole thing is based on-
I apologize, Peter. I missed what Al said. My internet connection said not now.
Okay, I think his whole question is, is it legal for us to meet? And is there a limitation on the number of people that could meet for such a visit? Is that?
I have a comment on that, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
First of all, in order to go on to do a site visit like that, you would need, obviously, and it's in the application process, the applicant is allowing you onto the property. The app, it's not up to the board or members of the board to allow or to invite any of the butters or the general public onto the applicant's property without his permission.
Okay.
As far as access to the site or onto the property, that's up to the applicant himself. He doesn't have to let people on his property, except- again, the ZBA or anybody else that he's applying to, the building inspector.
Yeah, normally, Tom, we would, normally that request would come up at the meeting itself. And, you know, members of the board would say they'd really like to look at this more closely or in person to really see what the situation is. And I think normally we do ask the applicant, say, we'd like to set up a site visit. Is that okay with you? And we try and work out a date and time. I guess it's maybe a gray area of how we've presented as to whether it's a public hearing or not. And it just seems like in the past, whenever we've done, we've done those. The abutters that may have been present at the meeting or participated in the meeting may have shown up and it seems like the applicant is trying to you know, get them to not oppose their situation either. So there hasn't been, to my recollection, any contention as to whether, you know, someone, they seem to allow them on their property, but I think you're right. It is, it is their decision. So maybe we can position that a little differently and just ask if when we ask for the site visit, if they would allow us and if they would allow, you know, others that do come, if they would allow them to view it also.
That makes sense. And site visits are in no way a public hearing. It's specifically stated on the meeting notice that ends up being posted, well, with the town clerk's office that no deliberations will take place. And now that I just said that about the meeting notice being posted with the town clerk's office, I think it has been decided some time ago that because it's a site visit and no deliberations, that a meeting notice doesn't need to be posted with the town clerk any longer.
Okay, so I guess the final question is maybe Al's concern is if we were at a meeting, let's say tonight, and people weren't sure about this and said, we want to go look at the property.
Right.
Is there any legal, we only, I think the governor's orders, you can't have more than 10 people or something?
Right, so I'm, yeah, you'd have to ask the owner's permission to be able to do a site visit. You'd have to ask the owner's permission to be able to invite abutters if there was somebody in opposition. And I'm, yeah, you would probably have to take precautions as you would anywhere, wear a mask and socially distance. And no deliberations at a site visit.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd definitely come up with the no deliberations.
Who wants to talk with masks?
It was very helpful to go on a site visit. You really should talk about it amongst yourselves as a board. I can see that the neighbors shouldn't be there because it can get pretty bad sometimes.
Yeah, I think technically what we've learned, you know, as you said, we I know since I was on the board, in the early days, we went on site visits three quarters of the time probably. And now it's much more a rare occurrence. But I think early on, we did a lot of deliberation, either amongst board members talking about what we saw and with, you know, the neighbors or the applicant's participation. I think we've since been told that there's not supposed to be any deliberation. It's supposed to be information or fact finding, and then we're supposed to come back to the meeting and then do all of our talking and deliberation there because I guess the public does have the right to know what we talk about regarding this, and that may be around the open meeting law. So
I was just asking a question. I think we started kind of going by ourselves beforehand.
Yeah, there certainly were people that, if they couldn't make it, yeah.
If you could see the property from the street, could at least familiarize yourself a little bit what the property was.
Right, right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think one of the reasons to that there haven't been as many site visits and that you've been going on your own is to expedite the hearing process. So the applicant doesn't necessarily have to come back for a continued public hearing.
Yeah, I can certainly see that as more of a inconvenience to them, but I think it's also been that maybe we've been getting better information. I mean, for me, looking at this plan and reading the packet, it really provided the information. I didn't, I did go on Google Maps and look and look at the satellite view of this and it was interesting. But it was, if nothing, it just solidified their case because this is just a wooded area really between these two properties. But I think, I don't know, maybe it's with the technology, we're able to see more. But yeah, no, I can see the advantage of both.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, of the other purposes for for some of the site visits, because one of the criteria is examining the site and making sure that it's it complements or whether it's in
Not a detriment to the neighborhood.
It's not a detriment to the neighborhood and you can go in and take line of sight of other buildings or budding properties and you can make a little bit better judgment versus, and I think you're right, the quality of of applications and stuff that we're getting and it's pretty well defined. We're getting some very good paper, so much easier to make decisions from this.
I was just going to bring up and show you, this was, it was kind of interesting when I you know, this is, this is the this is the McIntyre Road property. This is 70 McIntyre, this is 68, and the barn is back here in the trees. You know, I mean, the technology is
It's kind of small on my little handheld phone.
Yeah.
I can see where that's
You can zoom right down the street and you can look and see it's there was a woman down here walking her dog.
Sometimes, a couple that we went out on, the neighbors had mentioned that they had different types of drainage problem or something that could be easily solved and kind of talked about it and the owner was willing to do it.
Yeah, I certainly see, I love the visual. Yeah, I love the visual, but to Mary's point, I think sometimes, you know, and I know it's not the only consideration, but I do see that sometimes people are trying to get things done in a timely manner and sometimes you know, we would, we would schedule a site visit and then it would have to be three weeks away based on everybody's schedule and and basically it puts them off for three weeks on their decision. And then they still have to wait the 20 days if they're approved and sometimes seasonal, they're trying to get something done before, you know, another season, but I can see the advantage of a site visit.
Naturally, you like, you made a site visit.
I did a virtual one.
Yeah. So that, that is Good job, Peter, good job. Know what the woods are and what it's like.
There was one of them that was a satellite shot, which I thought was better. I can't figure out how to get back there, but
How did you paint the name of the name of the street on the asphalt like that?
Yeah. All right, well. Do we think we have any other items we want to talk about tonight or are we going to adjourn the meeting?
I'm all set.
Okay.
I'm all set. I'm all set.
All right, great. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, a second? Thank you, a second and a second, okay. Everybody's vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Any individual votes, please?
Aye.
Dan, aye, yes.
Al, aye. Humpersell, aye.
Seabuck, aye.
Pete, aye. Al?
Aye, aye.
Okay. All right, we're good. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Mary.
Take care, everyone.